We've talked about grants, there's not many out there. I mean, the mayor's conference may have Acacia, I think that's a feeder street. But there's not a lot of money being given out to those streets.
I've seen a couple of gold-overnoid funds, I've seen CMEF funds, CDVG funds.
That's some of them that we're talking about for Acacia.
Thank you.
Joan Metz, 6403 Arrowhead Court. I have a couple of questions, and I'm gonna give them all to you at once. First of all, I'm looking back at the September report. There were three other water sewer areas that were in need of repair over the next two years, and I don't see them listed on the new report. What happened to those? The second question I have is, how did you pick the eight extra streets for Scenario Two? Because in looking at the priority list on the street repair program evaluation thing that you sent out, you have five sixes and a seven on there in terms of priority, but not every six, so how did you decide which one? And then the last question is, if you were gonna do the Scenario Three with all the streets, would that be done in phases, or how would you attempt to do that?
First off, like you had mentioned, some of the things were removed. What we did is we really narrowed down to like today, just to get it done within one or two years. We reevaluated some of the streets, we went back, looked at them again, reevaluated, re-talked about it, and that's how we decided, changing our thoughts on some of the streets. And Scenario Three would be, if that's the way to go, that's what everybody wants, it would be done all at the same time, am I correct?
Yes.
They would all come out, that's how you get your good pricing, and it would all be done.
Okay, the one question you didn't address, at least I don't think so. The water and sewer questions that we had, it was Joliet Road West to Wolf Road, 6820 Joliet Road West to Wolf Road, 6,500 block of Black Hawk Trail, and 6,500 block of Pontiac Drive, those were all supposed to be within the next two years.
Well, they didn't go away.
Right.
They're there, we just picked one that was really the worst. Those will be there, if there's a water main break, we'll have to repair it, and it'll maybe be three years, maybe they'll extend it out a little further.
But then we'd be ripping up good street that we had just picked.
Well, it depends, some of them aren't on the street. Even if you put in a, you know, it makes sense, but how do you do it all? There's just not the money to do it all.
Right.
And some of these water mains aren't even in the street.
Do you have a plan then for those, at least those three additional that were a priority?
Basically, the plan would be, as I had mentioned back, when we started talking about it, you know, how other ways to come up with more revenue, what to use. If that is somewhere a year later down the line, if it's decided, maybe we're gonna do a surcharge, maybe we're gonna increase water, or do something else, then we can maybe bring it down to three years' average.
Not that I like to add more money to a package, but you couldn't bundle these, all five of these seemingly high-priority water sewer things into the bond?
No, that's, the bond is strictly a road bond.
Okay.
Could you have it on Arrowhead Trail, Leonard Holden? That street is bad.
Please say your address.
Leonard Holden, 11347 Arrowhead Trail.
Thank you, John.
We've been there since 95, and the street has been dangerous, unsafe to walk on, maybe the last three to five years I walked the street. Anyway, my question is, the contractor that did the street, we're not gonna have that same contractor, I mean, are we gonna look into getting a, it's not gonna be a road bid, is what I'm trying to get, to keep people through our streets. I mean, what's the guideline for choosing a contractor? Because I think this fellow here said, you know, you should get 20 to 25 years on the street. Arrowhead Trail, there's no traffic on Arrowhead Trail, other than the residents, and look what happened to that street in that short period of time, you know. So, again, my question is, how do we go about, is it a road bid, or who's gonna do the work on our streets?
I would go to the engineer here on how we pick, but Leonard, Arrowhead Trail, since I lived there as well, was last funded, we was in 1992.
Oh, I know, we've been there since 95.
Right, so what I'm saying is, is we've gotten about a 20, 21 years, and of course it is needed, out for a number of years. But with respect to the bidding, and Mr. Vanderbilt could shed some light on it, we would get whatever amount that we're looking for, and we would put that out to bid, and we go with generally the lowest responsible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder.
That answer?
Yes, because I just feel that it wasn't the lowest responsible bidder on that street, you know, because it's been unsafe for some time on that trail, to walk on, you know. And there's no traffic on there.
Not a lot of traffic, but let's face it, it's cul-de-sac, all of us go one way, and we have to go out, so we're perhaps gonna double where in the same areas. Somebody else in the back?
Jim Durkin from 6225 Edgbrook Lane West. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the research, and that was a powerful presentation this evening. I live, I've been there since 97. I'm not sure about the 20-year lifespan of the street, and there's very little traffic on Edgbrook Lane West, and those streets have really been in bad shape for a long time. So, I agree in support that we need to do something, and we should do it, I need to think a little bit more about the funding of it, but I just wanna say, we need to do something, and we need to organize and do it the most counter-effective way, because the streets are in horrible condition. And so, the 20-year life, I'm not sure about. And also, I think the patching, we need to stop the patching, and the crack filling, it's, we have more patches and more crack filling, I think we need a comprehensive support. So, thank you for this effort this evening.
Appreciate that, thank you. Somebody else?
Lee Colcanda, Ashbrook. Same thing, we're neighbors of Jimmy's.
Say your address, please.
Beg your pardon?
Say your address, please.
Oh, 1143 Edgbrook Lane.
Thank you.
And like Jimmy, we've been there since 96, and they just did a patch in front of our house, basically from our driveway west, about four feet wide and about 75 feet long, about a week ago. I swept that today, and I literally got like a five-gallon bucket of just stones on a job that was done a week ago. And I was just wondering, why? Why was it patched, first of all? And nothing against the engineer, but, you know, I owned a body shop for 20 years, and if I had done work like that on customers' cars, I would have not had any customers. But it seems the road repair that's done in Indian Head Park, in Ashbrook, is just, as the one gentleman said, it's deplorable. It's like, why even do it?
I think that was where there was a water, where it was repaired.
Well, now, now there's a lake four feet out in the street, and there's a lake at the west side of there.
There's a trench there, and I, if I'm wrong, or you should probably answer, if they're so bad, the underbase and the stuff that was just done, just to put in a patch. And there's other patches that we did in Europe, who I think are still good, but the little ones, am I correct, because the street underneath, the streets are so bad, we still had to put something there, but they do need to be done.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think your comment underscores a problem with what we've been trying to do with the limited resources, is that since we can't do the type of street program that now that streets require, we try to keep them serviceable, and, you know, it just occurs to me, we spend money on patching that I would rather have to divert toward payment of a bigger, more comprehensive and complete program, to get your money's worth from the project. Secondly, in places where we have done patching, and the patching, because the underlayment is sufficiently sound, and the patch takes and does a good job, tends to satisfy the people whose homes are immediately adjacent to the street that got repaired, and so it kinda deflates the incentive they have to support paying additional money to the village, so that we could pay the streets for their neighbor three doors up the street, on the other side of town. Kind of a catch-22, you do good and you hurt yourself at the same time, trying to get the support. But that is a very good comment, and that's hopefully what we're gonna go to through this meeting tonight, and the progress that we've made with studying the streets, analyzing what needs to be done, and then trying to come up with a comprehensive and complete plan, so that we can repair the streets and get some use out of them. I appreciate that comment.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Over here.
Thank you, Aubrey Phil, 6361 Pontiac Drive, and I just had a question where it says on these next steps, planning for referendum placement for next election. What is contemplated as part of that referendum? Will it be narrowly drawn, is it for municipal bonds only, or additional tax revenues? I'm just curious.
Public Works Trustee, there's, as we sit here, there's no plan or decision made that we're going to even do a plant, that's why we're having to meet, not a plant, a road bond? The problem is where to come up with money, but I'll ask Public Works Trustee if he has to give that question.
And I think all the options are open, we're not saying that that's, we are going to have a road bond, we are going, that's what we're here for, we wanna know what you, what you as a resident think, what you're willing to put up with. We've tried, as you all know, the last number of elections, we've tried home rule, we've tried twice property tax, all those things, and everything got voted down. We're happy to listen to what you have to say here, that's why we're here tonight, that's why we had this meeting. We're not committed to one specific thing right now, that's why we're still contemplating how to pay for this thing, 'cause as you can see, it's a lot of money, and we gotta figure out where to come up with it.
I think that's gonna be the board's issue, is educating the public and letting them know, this is really connected to this project, and will be used for that project, and I think that is a target warrant of support from residents. Thank you.
You know, a road bond would be strictly for the roads. I mean, this wouldn't be, if it was a road bond referendum, it would be, money would come in to do the roads, the roads below, and whatever year we go out, fifteen years, that money doesn't go anywhere else.
For those of you in the audience who pay attention to tax bills, twenty years ago there was a road bond, and that expired, I believe a year ago, year and a half ago, so it was a separate line item on all our tax bills, in my opinion, it was $120, $130. So that one, that went away. So in essence, the tax bill went down. So, I mean, if you look at the last page where you talk about the increase in taxes, in some ways, that amount of the state on our tax bills, it would have been almost comparable to exactly what's on these specific, through both doors. So, we talked about that before, I think it's important to know.
Thank you, good point. Alternatives for financing, aside from a street bond referendum. Everybody in here is aware that we've attempted a general referendum to raise property taxes, money that would have been used for multiple things, including the police officer servicing our debt, and as I had stated at the first referendum, and the one after it, that we would institute some type of road program, that would have raised approximately $100,000 plus or minus per year that could be applied. So if we borrowed a million dollars, we could do a million dollars' worth of roads and pay it off in ten years, or we could, you know, use that in a combination with something, some other source of revenue. The other one that I had talked about, that would generate funds, is the vehicle stickers. Right now, we charge $50, so we're not the cheapest, but we're not as high as a couple of surrounding suburbs, and we're cheaper than what the county charges in the unincorporated area. If we were to double that from $50 to $100, and I'm basing an assumption of 2,700 vehicle stickers being sold, we would raise to $135,000 per year. So, we're talking about a street bond, but there are some alternatives in terms of raising money, to do a bond for maybe a lesser amount, and then raise vehicle stickers. You know, I can argue why that might make sense, people with more cars would pay more money, rather than spreading across among all the homeowners. You raise the vehicle stickers too high, chances are we won't sell 2,700, 'cause people figure they'll take the chance on not buying one and avoiding the ticket, and getting away with it, and they'll have money in their pocket at the end of the year. But, street bond, that would cover it, you would know the money would come in, and it would be spent for these purposes, and at the end of the time period, whatever we choose, and that's all of us collectively, it gets paid off, and that amount, just like the last one goes away. From 1996, when the bond, the last street bond was approved till now, we found that what happens is that the end of the time period, when you've paid it off, your streets need all the work again. There is no constant updating to it. So, to some extent, I think that means, there is no perfect answer, there is no one right answer, it's a multiple answer, but we have to pick something, and we have to go with that. Saw the hand over here first, and then we'll come this way, in the back there, in the orange.
Tim Kizer, at Long Stone Heart Lane. Are we just gonna replace streets? Are there new improvements or new things that we can do that would maybe cost a little bit more, but would help to make the streets last longer? I know they're using stuff like Rhonda rubber, and they're using sheening and stuff on some of the roads. Have we looked into the possibility of having some new technology? Since some of these streets are so bad, I know that the streets in the town are different than, like where we are in Acacia, we have curbs. Where you don't have curbs, are there problems with the way the roads are crowned, or anything else that we can look at that would make sure that when we do something, that we're actually gonna improve the roads, and maybe make them last longer, by using some new technology or new things that are available?
Yeah, I'm familiar with, through the topics that you brought up, Rhonda shingles go into asphalt now, tires go into asphalt now. Unfortunately, that's a very specialized operation. The tollway uses it, 'cause they use projects that have 200, 300,000 tons of asphalt, and plants can gear up to make that asphalt. Smaller-sized projects like this, it really isn't cost-effective, and it hasn't been proven to last longer, or be a better product.
Could it be used on maybe three or four streets where there is significant traffic? I mean, we looked at, I mean, all streets won't be the same, because of the traffic level, I assume, so.
Correct.
Would there be some, some way to make those other, those main streets last a little longer because of the additional wear?
Well, again, and this came up earlier, I can't speak to how the streets were rehabilitated with the last bond issue, nor how they're put in from the first place. Whether it was a developer put it in, as he wanted to put it in, per village code, but this program that we're proposing right now, as I noted earlier, we put in with IDOT-specified materials, number one. Number two, those materials will be checked at the plant and on-site, and the installation will be supervised when it goes in. Again, you, I heard this talk of, we don't wanna use the old contractor, 'cause he didn't do a very good job. Well, I can't speak to how he did it, or if anybody even watched him do it. And that's why we get paid to do what we do, is because the contractors are gonna go minimal, rather than acceptable. So, that's, that's where we come into play, in giving you a good product. And as far as looking at the roadway crown, and what roadways, what situations we have out there, of course, we'll look at it, but a lot of times, it's overlooked. The roadway is, it's not a simple, but a very basic process. It's what happens from the roadway to say you're right-of-way that is the difficult part, that being the ditch lines, the stormsores, the water.
The lager on the edges and stuff like that.
The ravelling on the edges, whether you want shoulder or not. That's where the real difficult part comes in. The roads are probably crowned for a very specific reason right now, drainage patterns, et cetera. So, again, how they put the roads in the last time, I can't speak to, but I can assure you, they will go in under current design standards.
So the engineering that you're looking to do would take care of reviewing those streets?
Correct.
Not just for what, how long they are, or how much to replace, but how you would replace it, or recommend changes to be made then?
Correct.
Sir? Right here?
Yes. Dan Conrad, 11040 Ashbrook Lane. Just an observation, and I think Matt was talking about, will that, at the end of the road bond, that would then come off our tax bill?
Yeah.
And one thing, I assume you've kind of looked at that, but as interest rates in the last, what, 18 months have almost, not quite doubled on 10-year, 10-year bonds, that would be something I would think that we'd be looking at, maybe that's one of the reasons you're looking at that right now. Would that referendum happen in April then? Or when would that referendum happen? When's the election, March? March?
The March, general primary election, we could have a referendum about whether or not to do a street bond, if that's what the decision is. And of course, if it's approved, then we get to gear up and borrow that money, and we have the collateral for pledge, would be these property tax money that would come in yearly, and we can get our engineer, Public Works, on it, and start letting bids out, and get this project going, and perhaps see some new streets here, starting this summer.
Especially in the interest rate environment that we're in. And you had mentioned the economy and the scale, at the, with all the streets, obviously, it seems like there's some significant saving versus that's one and a half million dollars, or 1.3 million dollars to two and a half.
Yes, thank you, you have a good point. Next to Mr. Conrad.
Mary Urina, 6402 Arrowhead Court. Two related issues, one is a number that jumped out on me, out at me on the study here, is that for 65th Street, there's a $90,000 number in there, and several months ago, at a meeting I attended, we heard that there was talk of repairing or co-opping Lyons Township to do that street, and I recalled that that estimate was far less, like in the 30-some thousand dollar range. So, that was one, one thing I noticed. Second thing is, will the engineering study be done internally, or will that be something that we pay for? And typically, how much does an engineering study, if done outside, cost as a percentage of the total project?
First, we would use our engineer, we built that into these figures, and I think Ed can answer that question about 65th.
That $90,000 was for reconstructing, is for reconstruction?
So the 30-something was for, you know, just a simple overlay?
Right, no, it was reconstruction from the base.
No, no, the estimate that came from Lyons Township?
That was for an overlay, just overlay, and what's there.
But then the engineer, what we are, engineering firm, that was built in, and we built these into our figures.
Sue Ty, 105 Edgbrook Court. I was just gonna say, every meeting I've ever come to, everybody complains about the roads. That's the major, major complaint of everybody. And it's something that needs to be dealt with, and when you try to put through a referendum to raise our property taxes, none of us wanna pay higher property taxes. Nobody does, 'cause you don't really know where that money's going. But if you propose a road referendum, and say every cent is gonna go to improve your roads, everybody here, I think, wants better roads. But it's not an entitlement, that we can't stand here with our hands up, waiting for the government to give us money. You know, we've gotta pay for it, that's all there is to it. So I think we gotta bite the bullet, and figure out the best way for us to pay to have good roads, it's our responsibility. That's it.
Very good comment. A lot of, I shouldn't say a lot of, a number of the proposals that I've seen come along over the years, typically have some type of matching, you know, matching grant, like 80/20, the government give the, you know, state or federal give you 80%, and you have to come up with the other 20%. In 2009, with the stimulus funds, we were able to get Black Hawk done with federal money, and just a minimal outlay on our part for, I forget the exact numbers already, but a $400,000 project for about $20,000 of our dollars, that's a pretty good trade-off. And, you know, that would be something, if we could do all of the streets in that same fashion, and come up with our money, with just raising vehicle stickers a few bucks, I think we'd all prefer that over property tax. But that's, we have to take this on ourselves, and at the same time, we see that there's a way we could save money, if, because we're committed, we have this money to come in to spend, now maybe we can look, and, you know, I can't predict, I don't even know if we would get approved, if we applied, but perhaps we could look around. I know our engineering firm is constantly looking for ways to help us, I think that came out at one of our prior meetings, they're looking for brands that we might qualify for. A lot of the things you read about, state and federal, I've been to Springfield a few times, and talked to people down there, and, you know, I feel like I'm an outsider looking in, even though I'm a mayor of a small and significant, small but very significant town in the western suburbs, they're looking to do huge projects, you know, railroad crossings, and bridge overpasses, and things like that, and we just wanna get a couple of side streets paved. It's like, where did the money go? I don't know, but it's a very good point.
Hi, Jill Rayner, 11045 Glen Brook Lane. I'm encouraged to see Glen Brook Lane, and Ashbrook Lane, and Ashbrook on there. I am concerned about the timing, I will say, this summer with our children, there is, there are so many potholes, and so much loose gravel, they cannot ride scooters, they cannot rollerblade, they cannot skateboard. They can ride their bikes in the streets, but even then, it's hazardous, because if they come into a pile of loose pebbles, they're gonna fall over. I've seen moms trying to weave around potholes with wagons and strollers. On a very nice day in September, I saw an older woman pushing an elderly woman in a wheelchair, and getting stuck on our, this was on Glen Brook Lane, getting stuck. I think a lot of people in the village, even who don't live in our neighborhood, run and walk through our neighborhood, it's an aesthetically pleasing area, and a lot of people try to use the streets. And my concern is just from a timing, I get concerned thinking that we might have to live through a whole nother summer like that. I'd hate to see, whatever gets decided, I'd hate to see it get pushed to August or September. I think there has to be some urgency to what we're doing.
I appreciate the comment. I think all of us on the board, the whole town, the sooner we could get the streets fixed, the better. If we figure out a way to pay for whatever it is we wanna do, I'm a percent in favor of going as quickly and as prudently as we can to get the work done. I'm just looking at, you know, time-wise, if we have a March election, by the time we get something, you know, get things on track with the actual engineering studies, so that they could put the specifications out for bid, getting the bid, selecting the bidder, and getting them geared up. I would think, and not in the construction trade, but I would just think, that if we did this full package here, and we select a contractor, he or she has worked for their employees the whole summer, and this should be a project that could start immediately. I don't expect that we're gonna get somebody who's also working on a runway of air to bid on our streets, but this is a sizable sum of money, and we should, we should be able to get some priority.
Is it possible to spend some time getting some of those bids prior to knowing that if the bond is gonna be approved in March?
We can start, as soon as the, as soon as the results are known, we'll know how to proceed, and we can start working on that. Dave, is there any reason we couldn't start? If there was a referendum, and if it was passed, before we even sign documents, but we know we're going to, can we get bids being prepared with the specification?
Well, it will not be an overnight process, we can put the bid packages together once we get an approval. But yes, if we know we have the bond referendum in place, and the bond processes proceeding, we can start.
we can start right away. Again, I don't know, I don't have a handle on how long it would take the process to get the bonds in place, I do the money into your bank account to spend. That would be the catch. We could bid it, but if we.